Meeting is called to order at 7:01 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are we ready? Okay. May I have a motion and a second that the agenda of October 9th, 2018 be approved as submitted? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Okay. Okay, may I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda, including the approval of the minutes of September 25th, 2018 as submitted, acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes, and approval of East Rochester UFSD application for participation in varsity swimming with Penfield as an incomplete team. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. And I just lost my place, so hold on. Okay. All right, no Treasurers' Report or Special Reports tonight? No visitors? Gary's not speaking? Okay. Levia? Hi.
So, let's see. At Harris Hill, there were three fifth graders that were named into the Hall of Fame for being exceptional role models to the younger students. Many students made heartwarming signs which they waved around when welcoming back veterans at the airport, and students began prepping for Halloween by making creepy spiders and pumpkins. At Indian Landing, second graders in Ms. Cochrane's art class explored line shape in space with watercolor. Students in all grade levels were named Partner Pride Student of the Month for September. At Cobble's, fifth and first grade buddies had fun meeting each other and learning together, and their second graders also experimented with watercolor in art. At Scribner, Mrs. Skiversey's fifth grade class worked in teams to learn about the geography and the development of civilizations in the Western Hemisphere. Students enjoyed a night off at the Fall Festival where there were games, food trucks, and festivities. Third grade violinists worked hard with Mrs. Rusick to master proper hand and finger placement, and second graders had a fun fall day at Long Earger Farms where they engaged in fun activities like the corn maze. At Bay Trail, students engaged in book talks from the librarians, learning how to access books and audiobooks. Students in Mrs. Dublin's class used computer technology to explore the different properties of the states of matter. And at Penfield High School, many students were named Commed and Scholars and Hispanic Scholars by the National Merit Scholarship Program. And finally, students that were nominated by their peers as leaders attended a full day of training by sources of strength by connecting with each other and learning how to connect with others in various ways.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments for Levia? Dr. Putnam, did you have something?
No, I'm just getting ready because I'm next. Now, she did a very nice job in a short week this week, so hopefully that'll... Yeah, you guys only have school three days.
That's nice.
Yeah.
I know. You just get started and then we start breaking it up for you, right? Well, thank you. Thanks for keeping us apprised of everything that's going on. We appreciate that. All right, Dr. Putnam.
Okay, so for this evening's meeting, I just have some student and staff honors. I'm gonna briefly mention our fire inspection update required by New York State Education and turn it over to Dr. Sansoussi who will talk about the budget calendar for the 2018-19 school year. And sort of piggybacking on Levia, some National Merit Commended Scholars. We had 19 Penfield High School students. They were named as commended scholars in the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Competition. The students are being recognized for placing among the top 50,000 scorers out of more than 1.6 million students who took the PSAT-NMSQT exam last year. So, pretty exciting again. Every year we do have students that reach this honor, and it's just a wonderful way to showcase our students and their academics here in Penfield. We also have National Hispanic Recognition Program, Isabella Solano, Arwen Flut, Gabriel Linares, Connor McCuey. Congratulations to those students who were honored by the National Hispanic Recognition Program. These students scored among the top 2.5 percent of Hispanic and Latino students in our region who took that same PSAT exam. We have some perfect scores, which you always read about in the paper every once in a while, so we like to give kudos to those students, and we're proud to celebrate three students who scored perfect scores on their SAT or ACT exams. Jasmine Kylie received a perfect score on her SAT exam, and Jessica Dawson and Molly Sauter received perfect scores on their ACT exams, and congratulations to these students on this incredible achievement. Very, very cool. Teacher recognition, so some proud statements on our students, but also some equally proud statements on some of our staff. Congratulations to Penfield Central School District teachers who were recently recognized by Senator Rich Funky for being outstanding teachers, Tiffany Bersacchio over at Cobble's, Pat McNamara at Harris Hill, Jessica Tortorici at Indian Landing, Tom Coleman at Bay Trail, and Mary Botzwick at Bay Trail, and I'm really glad that Senator Funky acknowledged them, but we know that they're incredible teachers here in our district, and of course, we have many, many more across Penfield. Very exciting, I got a phone call from the governor's office. It was so important that his assistant would not speak to Nancy Bradstreet, would only tell me, so I had to rearrange my schedule to make sure I could give him a call back, but really cool honor that the press release came out last week, and congratulations to PHS Science Teachers Kim Roundy, Jill Paris, and Elizabeth Spry for being accepted into the New York State Master Teacher Program, and they're among 275 STEM teachers from across the state who were accepted into the program this year. And when you take a look at the press releases, I believe by county or area and then school district, and you take a look, and it's really very cool when you think about how many teachers there are across the state, and then there are a small group of 275, even a smaller group in Monroe County, so very proud of our science department here at the high school. Communications Award, very excited. I shared this with the board already, but our very own Nancy Bradstreet, who's always in the audience at our board meetings, so behind the camera, is our Director of Communications and has been named the winner of an award in the photography category of the New York State Public Relations Association's annual communication contest. The photo taken at the high school homecoming pep rally was selected for recognition out of more than 511 contest entries submitted this year, and Nancy's also won previous awards from the New York State... I have to get this right, I'm sorry. New York School Public Relations Association for her district newsletter, our website, photography, as well as the annual report category. And so, the photo is there from pep rally last year, last pep rally, and it's just very exciting for Nancy, and I'll just share that. The last couple of years, I've tried to remember to pick up her award because they give it out at the Monroe County... Sorry, at the New York State School Board Association Convention is where they hand it out, and this year, sometimes we do a luncheon for the winners, and this year Nancy's gonna be there because members of the high school and Nancy are gonna be presenting on suicide and school culture, and we're very proud of that. And of course, the one year she's gonna be at the conference, they changed the rules and they said, "We're just gonna mail you the prize." So, I wanna make sure we give you lots of kudos here at the board meeting, Nancy, for that.
Congratulations, Nancy.
You know, that's too bad because I know the first year you won, we did have a luncheon, and it was nice... I don't think anybody else was there, but it was nicely done, and you know, like it should be, so it's too bad that they...
Yeah, that is too bad.
Yeah, had downplays a little bit, but there was a bit... Three or four board members were there.
Was Nancy there? No.
Yes. No, no, no. We flew her in. This was a big time. Flew her in for that, the first one.
But I think it's a great honor. It's a great photo, and so I work closely with Nancy. Obviously, she works out of my office with Sharon Urkfits as well, and we know she does lots of things behind the scenes as the Director of Communications, so thank you, Nancy, for that. It's a great honor. Donation, we talk about these donations. This one I just think is really cool. We do get donations, and this one comes from our very own English teacher, Ms. Lisa Henry, Mrs. Lisa Henry, who generously donated her grown children's musical instruments to our music program. And she donated a violin, a trombone, and two instrument stands, and we really appreciate her donation, and know it will help students become involved and enjoy the music program that we have here at Penfield. This Saturday, we talk about partnerships. It's one of our board goals. One of the strongest partnerships we're continuing to build upon is the partnership between our school district and the newly-found Penfield Education Foundation. This is the second annual Penfield Education Foundation 5K. It's gonna be held this upcoming Sunday, October 14th, at 9:00 AM, and the community 5K race is intended to provide healthy exercise while supporting the Penfield Education Foundation. Children's Fund Run will follow the 5K, and as of last Friday, 96 team Penfield members are participating in the race. So, we actually broke the 100 mark, I believe, since this was put together, so we've got over 100 staff members who are involved, and board members, you're included in that number for those of you who are able to sign up. You don't have to run, you can walk, you can register the morning of, and it's a great time to come out. Hopefully, we'll have some good weather, and there are people who actually run. There's prizes and trophies and medals. I can't run, I have to do a lot of work, like preparing to give those medals out, but my entire family will be there walking and running, so... And so, that's our Penfield Education 5K. So, that's my updates. I just wanna give one update. I don't have a slide for it. We'll talk a little bit more at the next board meeting, but just for anybody who is watching today, there was no school for students. As I mentioned, you have a three-day week. Typically, our Superintendent's Conference Day falls on the Friday before Columbus/Indignious People Day. We changed things up in Penfield, and we're the only district that did so, and we actually had our Superintendent's Conference Day today, and it was so we were able to have Dr. Ken Ginsburg, renowned pediatrician and teaching doctor, who is really focused on social-emotional learning and building resiliency, and so he was here today and presented to our entire staff in the morning, and then we had lunch with him and administrators, and then he did a deeper dive for approximately 80 staff members, between 10 and 12 people from each building, each of our six buildings. And I just wanna say thank you to Mr. Pfeiffer, who really worked hard to get things set up. We're continuing to work on our social-emotional learning action plan that we will have wrapped up by the end of the year. We're working closely with the Children's Institute, and Ken Ginsburg was a great sort of segue. One of the things I heard, which was great, from a number of staff was opening day and the focus on social-emotional learning and having Elizabeth Delaney from the Children's Institute was a great kickoff, a reminder of why most of us got into education. It wasn't to make sure that everybody got a 100, but it was to really mold minds for the future and really connect with kids, whether it's kindergarten through senior year. And what we heard a lot from staff today was, "This was like a recharge. So now, you know, we started off strong, and it was exciting and a great focus on social-emotional learning, and then you really get back into teaching in the classroom and the rigors of school come up, and so five weeks in, about five weeks in, you sort of have a pause, reflect, and sort of felt refreshing." And so, we're really excited, the work that we're doing with Dr. Ginsburg, and he had nothing but really positive things to say about Penfield. And I'll share one story. He said that when he presented, we had a number of staff in that auditorium, it was full, is that typically when he presents, he feels in schools, two-thirds of the staff are with him and get it, and about one-third, he can tell, aren't really there. And he looked at both myself and then Jim later and said, "I think everybody was on board. I think everybody seemed excited." And we all felt the same way in terms of, we really have incredible staff in our classrooms who understand that social-emotional learning isn't going away, focusing on the whole student is something that Penfield is truly focused on from the board level down, and I will say that it was very exciting. A lot of great work took place today, and even so that I had to go home and put a tie on because I was wearing my Penfield jersey all day, but I dressed up for the board, but it was good work. So, thank you, Jim, very much, who also went home and put a tie on, so thank you.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, it was a great day.
Yeah.
Seguing into our board meeting, just one slide on the annual fire inspection. And so, during August, and this happens every single year, especially for newer board members, we do by New York State have to do a fire inspection. It's mandated by the State Education Department. It took place in all buildings in August 2018. We have the same... Typically, have the same person, Mrs. Dawn E. Howe, who is a fire inspector from the Genesee Valley Educational Partnership and Health and Safety Risk Management Office, conducted those inspections. All buildings were inspected and reports are on file, and that goes through the portal, so they get submitted. Alan McNiff does incredible work with his staff. They all have to go online now. I have to review them and then submit them, and all the buildings were inspected. Of course, any district the size we have, there are gonna be violations. They're all minor things, but they've all been corrected. All buildings are now in conformance, and as required by Section 807-A of the education law, public notice of the filing of the fire safety report will be published in our official newspaper, The Daily Record, on Wednesday, October 10th, 2018, which is tomorrow. And so, part of this, we have to make sure we publicly speak to it at a board meeting as well. And then, that's it for my report. I will turn over to Dr. Sansoussi for the budget calendar.
Thank you. Just wanna quickly review the budget calendar. It's hard to believe we're this far, we're starting another budget cycle, but the calendar moves on. So, tonight, we'll establish the budget calendar. At the next meeting, you'll hear from our auditor, Ray Wagler. So, essentially, we always have three years going at once, so we, you know, we'll be looking backwards at 1718. We're managing through this year, and we're planning for next year. This is the piece now about planning for next year. We begin the process by talking about the board's goals, so goals and assumptions and some guidelines established by the Board of Education to guide the process in the first meeting in November, and we'll also take a look then at enrollment projections. I will say, I've started work on the enrollment projections. It may slip, I think, to that second November meeting. I need some data from the Health Department. I'm not sure it's gonna be available, but in one of those two meetings, we'll have enrollment projections. The board reviews those goals twice and then adopts them finally, or plans to adopt them at the November 27th meeting. Then in December, we take a look at where we think we'll be with regard to the tax cap, do some budget forecasting, look at our reserves, and start to make a plan for how we're gonna manage through a budget cycle. And with that, the sort of the pre-work is done, and in January, we will begin the work of the budget itself with a review of the administrative portions of the budget, so expenses for the Board of Education, administration, building, administrators, their support staff, and so forth. In January, we've... The board's established four, tentatively four, budget work sessions for the year. The second one will be potentially held for budget work if we need it on January 22nd. At that meeting also, we'll begin review of the instructional programs in the district with the special areas of the instructional program. So, special education primarily, the largest chunk of this piece of the budget, school counselors, nurses, school psychologists, and so forth. A capital presentation, so the buildings and grounds, transportation, debt service on the first February meeting. We finish the instructional review at the second February meeting with the regular school teaching and occupational education, as well as computer services, clubs, and sports. BOSIs in March, and then by March 22nd, or I'm sorry, March 26th, the second March meeting, we'll be putting it all together. So, at that meeting, we'll have... We'll take a look at benefits, revenue, and we'll have a first look at a complete budget. The deadline for petitions for board candidates and for any budget petitions is April 22nd, and the board's expected to approve and adopt the budget on the 23rd. That's Tuesday. That Friday is actually the last legal day that the board can adopt, so our calendar begins now and runs right to the very end of the possible timeframe for the process. May 7th is the public budget hearing, and we vote on May 21st. So, you'll see this slide a lot, as you know, as we move through it, as we remind people again and again, that May 21st at the high school from 6:00 to 9:00 is our annual budget vote and election. So, that's a quick sort of overview of where we're gonna end up for the next many meetings as we work our way through the budget. Any questions?
Board members?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does that do it?
That concludes Superintendent Reports for this evening.
All right, thank you.
Can I actually mention one thing? I think we mentioned it last meeting, but just for the board, is typically right around this time and even the next meeting, Jim presents our instructional summary in terms of assessments, three through eight assessments, and nine through 12, and we're just dealing with some state embargoes and what we can actually share, and so we're holding off on those, and as soon as we can share, we will, but typically, this meeting has one and next meeting may or may not.
We'll have the three through eight data for next meeting, and then we gotta wait until the region status.
So, just for those of you who are looking and saying, well, you know, if you're monitoring what meetings, what we did last year versus this year, and especially the public who's all tuning in to find out what the instructional data summary will look like, this reminder is that we can't share until the state says we can, so... But thanks to Jim, he's been very patient in trying to get that together for you.
So, is that because of the new testing company?
It was delayed in large part because of the new format of the test. So, we remember, we had three... We had several changes. We had... This was the first series of tests that were fully developed by Questar, and then also they shortened the format, which was kind of done a little bit last minute, so they had to work their way through that, and because of those two changes, then they had to reset the level, the performance levels, one through four, to figure out what that looked like. So, it took a little bit of time to get that out, but that embargo was lifted mid to late last week, so I've got the presentation ready. It was just a matter of waiting until we had enough time to say, "Yes, we can get it on the agenda and go," and so we'll have it. We'll have three through eight for next week, and then region size, last year, it was well into November before that was lifted, so that's changing our timeline a little bit. We usually like to do that instructional data summary and then roll into the action plans. The summary tends to be a little bit lengthy, but we'll figure it out.
Yeah, exactly. What can you do? All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, board members, we're on item 5A. Hold on one second. Okay, so I don't have...
It's pretty much what Tom said.
Okay, so, all right, so I do or don't? Okay. So, this is just reiterating Tom's report on the annual fire inspection for fall 2018. During August 2018, the annual fire inspection, as mandated by the State Education Department, took place in all school buildings and outbuildings of the Penfield Central School District. Ms. Dawn E. Howe, Fire Inspector, Genesee Valley Educational Partnership, Health, Safety and Risk Management Office, conducted the inspections. All buildings were inspected and reports are on file. Some minor violations were noted, including doors being propped open, improper use of extension cords, and some blocked exit routes due to furniture being stored in hallways. All violations have been corrected, and all buildings are in conformance. As required by Section 807-A of the education law, public notice of the filing... Oops. Of the fire safety report will be published in the October 10th, 2018 edition of our official newspaper, The Daily Record. A copy of the notice has been provided to the fire chiefs of the town of Penfield and the town of Brighton. Okay, let's see. Oh my gosh. I'm having some technical difficulties here. All right.
Just see how it goes like that, just catching up.
Okay.
You're on the right one. It's just thinking a little bit.
Okay. So... Oh, we have an action item here. Okay.
It's hurt.
Yeah. All right. Award of Construction Contracts for High School Chiller. This phase one of the $23.6 million elementary additions project. On May 15th, 2018, the district's voters approved both a general fund budget and a separate capital budget for elementary school additions. The $22,588,000 Elementary Additions Project includes classroom additions at Cobble's, Indian Landing, and Scribner, and alterations and renovations at the high school in Bay Trail, including replacement of the high school chiller. Additionally, the general fund budget includes a $1,028,733 transfer to the capital fund for various renovations, including HVAC, electrical, and PCB remediation at the high school in Bay Trail. The total project budget is established at $23,616,733. The first phase of the project is renovation of the high school air conditioning system. The drawings were submitted to SED for approval in June using the new expedited review process. Approval was received in August. On Wednesday, September 26th, 2018, at 3:00 PM, bids were received for the following contracts for this phase of the project, general trades, mechanical, and electrical. The district enjoyed significant competition for the mechanical and electrical contracts. There were 10 bidders for the mechanical contract and six bidders for the electrical contract. Only one bid was received for the general construction contract. The submitted bids detailed on the... Are detailed on the attached spreadsheet. The construction manager has reviewed the bid submittals of the low bidders and recommends award. In addition to the recommended contract awards, costs will be incurred for construction fees, professional services, change orders, and other related costs. It is expected that the total project cost of all recommended awards will be within the budgeted amount. The Chiller project estimated budget allocation is $1,522,179. All right. Should I?
You don't need to.
No? Okay. So, all of the other monetary information is right there on the agenda. Based upon the construction manager's review and recommendation, approval of the following low bidders is recommended. DiAgostino Construction, contracting for general trades at $645,300. T-Bell Mechanical, contracting for mechanical, $248,400. Blackman Farrell Electric, contracting for electrical at $118,700 for a total of $1,012,400. May I have a motion and a second that construction contracts be awarded as set forth above?
And if I could, we'd ask Mr. Huffman to be here just to speak to the bidding process and to the outcome of this. Would you like to hear that before you take the...
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Mr. Huffman, dear.
Hi, good evening. How's everyone?
Good.
So, we put the Chiller project up to bid in September, and we were very, very happy with the performance of the electrical-mechanical side of the response from contractors, but we were challenged with the general trades. As you can see, we only received one bid, and it wasn't for lack of trying. I explained to Dr. Sansoussi, we live in a very competitive environment right now when it comes to general contracting work. The mechanical-electrical part of this was very attractive because the work was scheduled to occur during the winter regular hours, which is atypical in school construction, so it was very attractive. For the general trades, though, there's a lot of work out in the construction world right now and a lack of people. We don't... We're suffering from lack of...
Workers?
Workers, really. It's tough. So, a lot of the general trades contractors are bidding when they do bid. We're fortunate enough that they are bidding. They're bidding without support of subcontractors. DiAgostino has worked in this district over many years, is a good, solid contractor. For all those that could have bid, I'm thrilled we got DiAgostino, because there are some out there that I would have not preferred bid it. So, we got a good contractor, and considering the environment that we're working in right now, I feel fortunate we got one to bid. So, and there's... We were up against also Honey Island Falls bid today. There were other significant contracts out there bidding at the same time that we were up against, so they're certainly interested in those more because they're much bigger contracts. So, people were focusing their energies also elsewhere. As I say, it's just a challenging market right now, and it has been since about February of this year. February of this year. And we don't anticipate a change for quite a while.
Okay.
I was surprised to see the Blackman Farrell. I know they're really busy, but it seems like that's just a smaller amount for them. So, because they, they do great work. So...
They do.
You know, but I, I thought they were, I know for a fact they're very busy. So that's good.
Certainly in the last 10 years, we've seen Blackman Farrell and DiAgostino be low bidders here at the district. We haven't seen T-Bell here in a while. I've had them on other projects and they're a very good contractor. Tim Bell himself, the owner of the company, is very personally involved in everything he does, which is pretty cool. So I, I'm, I'm very pleased with who we got. It's a roll of the dice sometimes in public bid environment. So...
Well, this isn't the first time we've had this situation, you know.
Right, it isn't. You're right.
And I think you're right. It's so competitive out there right now. And this is more for Bill. You know, we run into this thing and sometimes we have a great advantage because of the time of year. So the more Mark can do this type of thing with Gary or whatever, it helps us more than anything. But sometimes you do get just, you don't get a lot of competition.
The other thing I shared with Dr. Sansucci is that for many years, it was a, it's kind of like the home market. There's, there's the sellers, there's, there's, it ebbs and flows.
Right.
It goes in cycles. There's sellers markets and there's buyer markets. We're in a buyer's market right now, if I can put it that way. So for years, we enjoyed really low numbers. We were getting really good numbers when we were bidding these projects. We're not so, we're just not there right now. And will it change? Sure. It's a cyclical economy we live in, but we're kind of, we're kind of on that upswing right now in that environment.
You have to go with where you're at at the moment.
Yes.
What else can you do, right?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yeah, when we went, this time we went through the expedited SED review. How did that affect our timing, timing? Essentially, do we need to see how much of an impact on savings and did it provide us an advantage in our timing of bidding?
Let me answer that. So there were a couple of factors at play here. One of the other reasons, one of the major reasons we did the expedited review is because the school, this building doesn't have, I know despite what we're, this room, but the building is without air conditioning. Had we gone through the traditional review right now, mechanical, electrical, plumbing reviews are running 32 weeks at least right now. So we wouldn't have even been out of SED yet. We would have come out in 19 and we would not have had air conditioning for next summer. So the impetus of this expedited review was to get, if everybody's familiar with expedited review, SED was faced with these really extended review times. Architecturals were taking 20-plus weeks. Mechanicals were 32 to 40 weeks, pushing a year in some cases. So they came up, there, there was a lot of yelling and they listened and they came up with this system called expedited review. And it goes to third parties. So the documents are submitted by the design team, go to SED, they review them, say they're acceptable for review. Then they go to a third party, which is an architectural engineering firm, private firms, and they're compensated for their time to do the review. They're doing them in a fraction of the time SED was. The other thing SED was, they had people leave. So they were, they have one mechanical reviewer right now doing reviews in the entire state of New York. So to go through that process is, is excruciatingly long. So the expedited review was the option to get it through the review process, get the building permit, and allow us to bid this and do the work and still get air conditioning in time for next year. The way I have this constructed right now is to finish the construction work in April. So we're doing the commissioning of the air conditioning in May so that we can have, for testing and for exams and all that, have air conditioning. We would have missed that. So you would have been two years without air conditioning if, if we had not taken the opportunity to use that expedited review.
Good, thank you.
Sure.
Just a, a side point. Friends of our son is an electrician with a union firm in Buffalo. And he's just been assigned to work six months because they got a contract at Amazon, which I, you know, it's great for a New York state contractor. I just thought that was strange. But so there's, there's another drain on, you know, a large electrical, union electrical company when you're sending more than, several people out to Amazon to work. So good, goodness sense, but not good for us.
The trades are dying for people.
Yeah.
The, the, the young people just aren't going in that direction. And look at me. I mean, people, there's a lot of guys my age, men and women, who are aging out and there's not a lot of people to replace them. And it's a tough, we're in a tough situation with no easy answers going forward.
Yes, Lisa.
How do you think this market will affect when we go to bid the rest of this project? Do you have thoughts on that? Or, I mean, I know it'll be a little later, but...
Yeah. So the next phase is going to SED in early 19. And right now, we're anticipating the same environment we're in right now. If we could make any forecast, which that's kind of what you pay us for when we do our estimates, is to forecast what we think is coming down the pike in the future. And we don't see it abating. We don't see it. We just don't. But we did our due diligence. We really tried to, when we developed the budget for this project, was to anticipate the fact that the market is where it's at. So we built that into our estimates when we came up with a budget and when the scope was presented and what you as a district wanted to do. What did we think that work would be worth two years from now? So we did our very best to recognize the environment we're in and inflate, essentially inflate our numbers to reflect what the market's doing. So if I, I hope that we did a good job and that we've done our due diligence planning.
All right. Any other questions for Gary? Okay. Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second on the table. Just to remind you that we've made a motion and a second that construction contracts be awarded as set forth above. All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right. No financial items. We have a policy review. First read, Dr. Putnam.
This is a very important policy.
Yes, it is. Look at that.
There's the first read. It's up online. If anybody wants to go take a look at it, it's the evaluation of the superintendent and other administrative staff. Minor changes to this policy, really what it does is, is say, I'll be evaluated or any superintendent in the future will be evaluated based on the evaluation set forth in the contract and the collective, and not the collective bargaining agreement, the, my contract, my superintendent's contract. And so really, part of that is that people can come in and see how, if people are interested, they can come and find out how the superintendent is evaluated. And since it's in my contract, my contract is always available and it's on file at the district clerk's office, Sharon's office. And that was really the only major change. It was just some wording. Instead of, the policy sort of tried to list out how I would be evaluated. And I say aye, but this will be, you know, hopefully a policy that will be here 30 years when I'm no longer here anymore. And, and so that's really the only change is that it basically says what's, how I will be evaluated in my contract is how I will, that's how the evaluation is. It was a really fumbling job I just did.
No, you did okay. It's all good. It's cold in there.
We probably should have spoke instead of you, but, you know, Catherine and...
Well, I thought you were just going to kind of do the third person thing.
Yeah, it was hard. I tried to do third person in my head, but it came out.
Catherine, Lisa and I, we toyed with this a little bit, but I mean, basically it's just following the contract, which is now consistent. And this has been about 12 years, if you look at the data on the bottom one, since we've done this. So it just makes it easier for the public in particular and us to understand.
Right. And Bill, I'm not sure we've done any policies yet. So what we do is, like, we call this the first read. So it, it, this has come across our agenda is we're going through the policies. It's up now. We've made some changes. We go through what we call the first read, which is what we just did right here. And then it's up for public comment. Sharon posted on our website. If there's any public comment that comes through, we take that into consideration. And then we go for a second read. And usually after the second read is when we approve it. And then it becomes our policy. Some have had to go for more than two reads because there's more tweaks and whatnot, more discussion comes up. But that's basically the, the process that we go through.
And thankfully, that policy doesn't mention how I present the policy change.
Right.
It's how I'm evaluating.
But we're going to talk about that.
Part of the evaluation.
Yeah, right. Right. I think we're going to have to put that in.
It's been a long day. It's been a long day.
Okay.
That's it.
Yeah.
All right. So resolutions meeting. Okay. Did I miss something?
The committee.
Okay, yes. Okay, I'm sorry. Skipped over that. Yes, our legislative committee met this week. Mark, did you want to just give a brief recap?
Okay. So when is the, we have...
Mark, is your mic on? Sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This was one of the, it was not the first meeting of the year, but it was, I think, the second. One of the things we did was reaffirmed our legislative priorities. And this is what we focus on when we go on our trips to Albany over the course of the year. And the priorities are, as usual, timely, school safety, mental health, full funding of the educational formula, and dedicated streams for mandates such as mental health. And then also developing and maintaining legislative relationships, especially in the political landscape. Of course, that's always been a priority. We want to make sure we have good relationships with our legislators. We work together very well and we continue to do so. And then finally, the APR, the APPR and the student opt-outs, which in light of some of the more recent things going on with the, I think, the regions, that that may not be as much of an issue as it has been in the past, but it's still something we should keep an eye on. We also approved two position papers. And one is supporting the well-being of students and the other is related to keeping our schools safe and secure. So again, very timely. These are the kinds of things we will focus on. We will, we will take these position papers to Albany and make every effort to have them take action to support those topics.
Very good. So the position papers are going to the steering committee next.
That is correct.
And they're meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And then after that is the executive. So that's the process for which we go through on, on those position papers. Okay, thanks, Mark. Any questions or comments for Mark? Okay. All right. Now can we do this, Sharon? All right. The Area 2 NISBA resolutions meeting. And Lisa, Mark, either one?
Who am I on? Hello. Mark did a lovely job. I just want you all to know, you know, he's our, he's like the big guru and he like does the whole meeting.
I know.
And he did a beautiful job facilitating. So he did a nice job. And Bill attended because he's going to be the next NISBA rep, I guess. He's understudying.
Yes.
He doesn't know that, but that's what I, that's what I've decided today.
I know it now.
No, but this was my first meeting. So it was really interesting for me, for them to kind of talk through, you know, the different resolutions and really to hear just even the opposing sort of, I guess, opinions in our area and having people talk about, you know, on the floor and those kinds of things. So for the next meeting, look in your email because I'm going to do a summary of kind of what Sheri put together. There's a couple things that, that we want to, I guess that we're sort of, people are on the fence about a couple of resolutions. And then there's one that we may want to do an amendment for, to bring forth. And Sheri said she could help us with that and get that out to other boards. So I'm going to try to get on that in the next couple of days.
Okay.
So we can have some discussion about it and bring it back to the next meeting.
So if I may, there's, there is a couple of resolutions. One was recommended by the resolution committee, one was not recommended. And we see those early on, we see those before, we all see those before it actually goes to resolution committee. But then we get the final packet, which was what we had to go on at this meeting. And there were some amendments made, some, some proposed amendments. So right now they are as are written, but we know there will be amendments to those resolutions at the meeting. And they were significant enough to, to kind of change the weighting. One of them that was approved on like a six to five vote, very, very close, they, they made some amendments that made it much more clearly, I think, desirable, let's put it that way. I don't think it'll be, it won't be as divided. And then there was one that was not approved that I think the resolutions might, the amendments might make that resolution desirable enough to get it approved. So that's where, this is unusual. We usually don't see these things, these resolutions, these amendments come along to, to be significant enough to change the position. But that's what will happen. And Lisa will kind of elaborate on that so we all understand where we're going. And, because we have to decide how we want to vote if those amendments are accepted and how we want to vote if they're not accepted.
Okay.
So there's two different, two different aspects to it. And that's what we need to make sure you understand. And then Lisa will carry out.
Great.
And I will carry it out.
All right. So carry out and carry on. Thanks, Lisa. John?
I know there's always been discussion around that group, having been there several times. So was there still the healthy, you know, there's the difference between Monroe County boards and the other regions in our area. But was it, was it fairly...
Eclectic?
Yeah.
Good word. Eclectic.
It was diverse, as you'd expect, with the county. But I, but it was, you know, it was the kind of debate discussion you would hope would happen in, in, by our professional legislators. I mean, it was respectful, it was constructive, you know, with a lot of listening. This is the kind of thing we should, which we had more of. So it was, it was a great meeting. I enjoyed it.
Good, good. Glad to hear that. Because it's always been small crowd, larger crowds, small. And I'm glad to hear it's coming together. It's having a speck of there representing his group of people too. So I think that'll help them be a little more professional too. Great.
Great. Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Lisa.
Cool.
Okay. Under new business, I just wanted to bring up the kickball game where we had Bill and, and John was there. John hit his poster. Do either of you, would you like to say a few words?
First of all, it was just wonderful to see all the teachers and everybody just really was into it.
Yeah.
Especially Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, he's a...
It just, it was, I, I just, I'm just saying. But, and my kids were just absolutely fascinated and it was if their teachers were at like these professional athletes. Everybody was really having a good time. I had better seats than John did.
I had, I had the Harris Hill game in view, both, both games. So I was at the 50-yard line.
So...
But the kids were chanting, doing their school songs. I mean, it was, they were, they were really pumped and it was cool to watch.
And I know that you were there representing the schools your children go to, Harris Hill and Cobble's.
Correct.
Neither of them being the winning team, which was Indian Landing.
For the second year in a row.
It was a powerhouse.
Yeah, I was reminded of that. Second year in a row.
This week. Blowouts or shutouts. I mean, it was, they were...
So I, I couldn't make that.
Marcy has...
Yeah, she's, well, I know there was like, as you know, I couldn't make it, but around a quarter to 11, I got a couple of texts from people. There was still a debate going on at some bar.
Oh.
Really?
Oh, yeah. You weren't a part of it.
I wasn't, we weren't a part of that.
Yeah. Must have been the winners that were participating in that.
Well, I, I heard Mark Nelson come up to Marcy Ware and say, so the winner buys, right? And I don't know if she was having anything to do with that. So, you know, but she loved having that trophy. I'll tell you, that was great. But, but Bill, like you were saying, and John, the, the school spirit was just, I loved it. I, I couldn't, I missed the first half of it, but I was there for the second half. I loved every minute of it. I wish I could have seen the whole thing for the very reasons you're talking about. But it's just that great school spirit, the Team Penfield thing. And, you know, yeah, there's that friendly competition, but, you know, you could, you could totally sense the unity behind the whole thing. It was wonderful. It was just great.
Maybe they want to draft us individually to be on a team.
You know?
You know? We don't want to be the referees, I can tell you that.
But I see potential. I see potential.
We could have our own team.
Yeah, you know?
Mmm.
Now that's a thought. Maybe we have to do a workshop on that.
Not a good one.
I don't want them rolling down for us.
I know. All right. Any questions or comments on any of that?
No, I, I've got something on this.
John?
So I downloaded the app for the NISBA convention, which many of us are going to. And it's very similar to last year's. It's great. Tons of good options. So I think, I think we did this last year. I'm going to send out what I'm going to plan on going to. Just, I don't know if we want to...
See if you want to cover more, more topics.
Yes.
And you're going to go from 8:00 AM to right till 4...
Eight till 5.
Right to 5:00. Okay.
Stuff that goes all the way to 5:00. So it'll be worthwhile.
Every day.
Yep, every day.
It's not 8 to 5 every day.
I will...
Plus if you go to the coffee, you know, at 8:00, I'd go to free coffee.
Mingle. But I'll send that list out. I don't know if everybody wants to.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Yeah, no, that's helpful.
That would be really helpful. We have a good presentation from some of our...
So, yeah. And then when the ones who are going come back, what we've typically done, Bill, is report back to the others, to the, and we have done it a couple of different ways. We'll figure out which, which way works best for this year and depending on how much inform... We'll figure out which, which way works best for this year, and depending on how much information is gathered and whatnot, 'cause not everyone's going to NISBA this year. We're doing it differently this year, where, um, a group is going to NISBA, and then a group is going to, um, National. And so, the information gathering and sharing is probably gonna be a little different this year, and we'll figure it out.
All right. Great.
And, and our next meeting, um, on 23rd, we have a workshop...
Yes. And we have the agenda for that, and we'll bring it.
And we might have a, so, we have a draft agenda that we've seen, and we're not sure what time we'll start that yet, 'cause we're not sure about Executive Committee.
Well, it's, it is, yes.
That's right, 5:00, we said. So, 5:00 on the 23rd.
Yep. It's set for that, so, um, be prepared for that, and, uh, you know, we'll take it away.
And we'll give a report on the National, and we'll figure a way to do that.
Yeah.
As the three of us will have been there.
Yep, we'll figure, we'll figure all of that out.
April, first, second, third, something, yeah, something like that.
Something like, I think it's...
March 30th, April.
Yeah, something like that, right at the end of March, beginning of April, so in the spring. And we're hoping that, you know, the different sets of knowledge will be advantageous, 'cause we haven't done this before, and we're looking forward to checking it out and seeing what we can learn from being around people from all over the country. It should be interesting.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to that. All right. Anything else? All right, I guess not.
We can bring the bills back in.
Okay, we covered, oh, our next board meeting is the 23rd, and the, you just mentioned the workshop, but Policy Committee is meeting October 11th, so that's Thursday?
Yeah.
Thursday.
And, I guess that...
You can run my homework.
Yes, I was gonna say, yes, Policy, if you hadn't read about the, that packet that Tom gave us, if you could finish that up.
We have audit right after, correct, Mark?
Thursday.
Thursday Audit Committee.
Okay.
3:30?
I didn't see that here.
Right, 2:30, yeah.
All right. Any other comments? Information to share? All right, very good. There being no other business, may I have a motion and a second that the meeting be adjourned at 7:53 PM?
Yes.
Questions, comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. (door closing)